Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, October 29th, 2019. First, we'll start with the acceptance of the minutes for the meeting of October 15th, 2019.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I was saying, yeah, but even though I'm watching on TV.
Okay. Communications and audience have nothing. We'll go to Dr. Kron with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I'd first like to thank and congratulate Gary Graziano and the Athletic Department of Rockland High School for a very successful Athletic Hall of Fame Dinner on Saturday night. It was a great event. It's always great to connect recent and past graduates with our current students so that they can see what happens, what kinds of great things happen as a result of people's work with the Athletic Department. So that was just a great night. I'd also like to highlight and congratulate Beth Bond and Janet Cook on a very successful one-book-one-school extension activity that they did last week, a long walk-to-water event that took place. And it was just a great, it was great to see so many students giving up their time after school, so many faculty members giving up their time after school for such a worthwhile fundraiser. So congratulations. Also want to congratulate the high school for a very successful open house last week that they held for the incoming eighth graders. I was particularly impressed by student leadership and faculty involvement with that activity. It was a great format and a great turnout. So I was, I was very pleased and congratulations to them. Also like to report, had our first of the year emergency, emergency management team meeting last week. And for those in the public, I just want everyone to know how closely we work with the police and the fire department to do everything we can to keep our students and faculty safe day in and day out. This meeting that we held last week included Scott Duffy, Chief of the Fire Department, his new deputy, Tom Heaney, Ethan Schnabel, Jane was there, and our very own Mark Shum, along with others. Specifically, we talked about a reunification process following any kind of an evacuation or situation where we needed to evacuate an entire building. We're working hard to make sure that we have plans in place for every step that would be required with reunification. So choosing reunification locations and busing plans and so on and so forth. The second thing we discussed was the, the possible need to actually lock down schools even after school hours. Sometimes events happen at that weird time, 3 o'clock, 3:30, quarter, four. There's a question, what do we do? Do we lock down? There's an issue in the neighborhood. So we're exploring those topics as well. And finally, we discussed what are called stay bags. We're calling stay bags that will be emergency kits located in each classroom throughout the district. The bags will actually be buckets. We're envisioning some sort of a Home Depot-style bucket containing essentials such as toilet paper, water, first aid, tourniquets, and so on and so forth. We'd like to have these stay bags in place to every classroom throughout the district no later than holiday vacation. I know from firsthand experience that these items can prove to be extremely useful. When you've never been in a lockdown that lasts for an extended period of time, we tend to forget about all the things that are required within a classroom. And these kits will, hopefully, we'll never need to use them, but if we do, we want them to be there.
And a bucket would have covered it.
Exactly. Right. And the bucket serves multiple use purposes, as you are well aware. But again, I just want to bring this up because I want the community to know how closely we work with the police and the fire department and how fortunate we are to have a great working relationship with them in our efforts to keep students and staff safe day in and day out in the Rockland Public Schools. I'd also like to point out that I've, I've become personally very interested in the vaping dilemma. I was, it raised my interest when the governor, you know, put forward a ban on the sale of all vaping cartridges for the next, what was it, eight weeks?
Yeah.
Eight weeks. But I think what's coming out of that is just that what we do not know about the dangers of vaping for students. And what we do know is that students do not look at vaping products as they're, as being as dangerous as cigarettes. And what I'm concerned about is they may, may very well prove to be as dangerous or more dangerous for all we know. We just don't know at this point. And children are becoming very sick and it concerns me. So last week, I held a meeting with Kathy Ryan, our head nurse, Brenda Folsom, our Director of Health and PE, and Freya Leahy, our Director of Adjustment Counseling, just to begin the conversation about what we are doing in the Rockland Public Schools. We are doing a lot in health and PE classes already, but I want to assure the public that that, this is something that we are taking very seriously. We feel a responsibility to be the, on the, on the cutting edge of educating our students and parents about this issue. We plan to hold a parents' night prior to holiday break. And that's all I have for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kron. All very interesting.
Very interesting.
We'll move on to reports, financial reports for September, the school department, the high school student activities, the middle school student activities, the cafeteria and the, and the daycare.
Motion to accept.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to skip ahead for Ms. Hackett here. We're going to move on to new business just for a minute for a request of approval of the budget alignment. Ms. Hackett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've handed out updated October 28th FY '20 budget adjustment Excel spreadsheet to folks. And what this is, is just a realignment of our, readjustment of our budget in accord with updated revenue projections on Medicaid and grant receipts. And so we'll be reducing the town revenue for Medicaid by $225,000 and grants by 20, by approximately 20, by $27,736 for a total adjustment of $252,736. And this would be absorbed by an increase in our utilization of our revolving accounts. And I itemized each individual increase or decrease within the revolving accounts to equal that offset.
Okay. So we would need a vote. The vote is to offset $225,000 reduction in the town appropriation and $27,736 reduction in grants with a $252,736 increase in the revolving fund utilization.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'd like to say too, it's another way of showing the way that the different departments cooperate with each other in this town. I mean, this certainly helps not just us, it doesn't help us, but it helps the people balance the budgets overall. And I think that, and that needs to be mentioned because it didn't always be, it knows that way.
Correct. That one town needs to work together.
And we've got a, a great operations going up in the town hall, which is, which is wonderful, and I just wanted to mention that.
I agree with you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Lapp and Biz are certainly working their high knees off up there, so we appreciate it too. So thank you for playing the game of numbers.
And with that, at the risk of making a promise, it's my intention by the end of November to take this document and turn it into your first MUNIS book.
Okay.
And to create a by-building budget book for you that reflects this breakdown in salary expense in spend.
Is there any chance that money could come back? I mean, I know it's because of this lag in payments for Medicare because they don't pay, but will their payments come in perhaps in the future that would possibly come back to us?
Yes. The payment schedule is two quarters behind for Medicaid. So anything that comes in in addition to what is currently being projected to be reported to DOR would fall to Free Cash.
Yeah.
And would be available for appropriation from Free Cash.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
So essentially, it's just needs to catch up to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is that all, Ms. Hackett?
That is.
Okay. I'm going to go backwards now into the curriculum update with Ms. Forlizzi, the Assistant Superintendent with Coaches, Mr. McAndrew for math, Mrs. McKinnon for literacy, and Mrs. Ryan for steam. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Maroni and members of the school committee. I'm excited to be here tonight with our coaches, Tim McAndrew, Karen McKinnon, and Lisa Ryan. They're our curriculum coaches and they work very hard to update and keep us in line with a progressive approach that we are taking to our elementary curriculum. The coaches and I meet weekly and on an individual basis, weekly, weekly and individually and as a team to collaborate. Our main objective is to ensure a high-quality education experience for every student in Rockland. We have a three-tiered system for instruction. The tier one is the grade level curriculum. Tier two and tier three have varying levels of support. The challenge is to have every student access his or her grade-level curriculum while meeting their individual needs. Our coaches play an important role in classroom, classrooms, working with teachers to support student learning. Professional development is embedded in how coaches model lessons, co-teach, remediate, and provide a guidance to support targeted interventions for students. We're in the process of a pedagogical shift from teacher-focused classes to student-focused classes. The shift means the needs of our students, not only academically, but also behaviorally and socially emotionally. Our coaches provide constant feedback to teachers regarding their practices as we maintain teaching and learning with high expectations. These three coaches are talented and dedicated. They lead our teachers in a shift of instructional practice in order to prepare our students for success in our global society. And now, Tim, Karen, and Lisa will provide presentations to you in their areas of expertise. Tim, that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. So my name is Tim McAndrew. I'm the math coach here in Rockland. I've been working, it's my second year, and I work in all the elementary schools. So my, my role and goal of my position is to support teachers, to ensure that students are learning the Massachusetts math standards. There are roughly four buckets in which my role takes place, which I'll elaborate on. There's coaching cycles, curriculum, professional development, and program review. All of these categories overlap, but it's helpful to separate them out for the purpose of explaining my role. So we'll start with coaching cycles. And some of this will be the same for both myself and some of the other coaches here. So, so two-day rotations, there's three elementary schools, there's a six-day cycle. So every two days, I go to a different school. So days one and two, I'm at Memorial Park, three and four, I'm at Esten, and five and six, I'm at Jefferson. In terms of the cycles, I'm either modeling something in a classroom, sometimes I'm co-teaching with a teacher, or I'm, I'm observing and providing feedback. Sometimes the observation might be staying in one classroom or walking, oftentimes walking through the grade level while they're teaching math. In addition, it might be working with an individual teacher, or it could be the entire team. I do have the opportunity to meet with teams, we all do, through PLCs at least once a month, which is an opportunity to check in with them, plan with them, find out how things are going, and help them to come up with interventions to help students who are, who need it. Next, I'll talk about curriculum. So as you may be aware, I'll just kind of put these up. We are in the process, when I arrived last year, teachers had been using Envisions as a program for several years. By last year, it really wasn't being used so much as a program, as a resource, really sort of in between. So we now have a math committee. It's, we're in our second year, which I'll talk about more later. And we are now looking to hopefully implement a new program next year. In the meantime, we put together a scope and sequence that all teachers across the district follow. We continue to utilize Math Workshop, which was introduced last year. And Math in Practice is the name of a resource that we brought in. It's not a program, but it's a very helpful resource for teachers. It's totally aligned to the Massachusetts standards, so it's improving teachers' practice as they, as they go through it. Next, I'll talk about professional development. My main priority in terms of professional development is, let me go back a little bit here, is to ensure that teachers understand the standards, which are really originated with the Common Core back in 2011. If they don't understand the standards, then we can't teach the students those, those standards and the level of rigor to which they are asking our students to, to perform. As Ms. Forlizzi, Ms. Forlizzi mentioned earlier, our focus is on student-centered learning. So what that means, so my PD has focused on student-centered learning, which means that it's not the teacher doing all the work and the thinking, it's the students doing that work. We talk a lot about productive struggle, making it challenging, but not too challenging, but enough so that students are actually being pushed to figure things out and learn and make those connections. If it's too easy, they're not, they're not learning, and if it's too hard, it's not accessible. So it's finding, it's finding that, that sweet spot. One way to do this is through what's called rich mathematical tasks, tasks that are accessible to all students, might take them more than a few minutes. It might take them 10, 15 minutes, but it promotes that productive struggle and teaches them perseverance and the process standards that are also very important in the standards. Manipulatives are a really big part of this. We were able to purchase a lot of concrete materials in math and distribute them at the beginning of this year, which has been fantastic. In terms of differentiation, so that, that begins with assessing students to find out how they're doing, whether it's within a classroom, within, within a actual class. We now, as you know, have iReady, which is a diagnostic, which gives us a bird's-eye view, helps us to see what students can do and cannot do. Unit assessments, these are things that we often look at in, in PLCs to discuss how, how are students doing, and if they're not, then what can we do about it? We had our first iReady data meeting for both literacy and math back in, a couple weeks ago, October 15th, which was excellent, and it gave teachers an opportunity to learn both the, am I going to get hooked here? That's the, that's the Tim alert.
Two more, Brad.
There's a clock there, I didn't know. Okay. So what was I saying? Yeah, so both, they could learn about, about the reports, right, that are on there, and also what can, and gave them time to actually start to think about, okay, what are we going to do about it? Because if they don't, if we don't give them time to do something about it, then there's no point in doing it. And as I said, within the classroom, ongoing formative assessment so that teachers, it's driving their instruction on a daily and a weekly basis. I put CPA up here, this is very important in math. CPA stands for Concrete Pictorial Abstract. Traditionally, the way students were taught were at the abstract level, which means with numbers. What we've learned over the years is that it's very important that students learn all three, often in sequence, starting with concrete manipulatives, which I just discussed, relating that to pictures, drawings, models, and then finally attaching the most abstract form of math, which is the, which is the numbers, which is where we need to get them eventually. And lastly, I mentioned the math committee earlier. We do have a math committee. They're a committee group of teachers from three schools, all grade levels. And just briefly, we, last year, spent a lot of time assessing where we're at. They were the reason that we brought in Math in Practice, which was great. We've created a vision and a checklist, a criteria checklist, so that when we look at resources, we know what it is that we're looking for. For example, it has to be aligned to the standards. It has to accommodate Math Workshop because that's a model that we use. And we are currently evaluating programs for implementation next year. And finally, MCAS preparation. MCAS preparation really happens throughout the year as we prepare students circling back to the standards, right, for those standards and the rigor of those standards through instruction and, as it says, assessment. We do have online practice. We have in third and fourth grade. We have a program that students can use to take assessments online, which gives them more practice. There are also, the Department of Education puts out practice tests that students can use. It's the same exact platform that they'll use to take the MCAS test, which is very helpful. And we also analyze the previous year's MCAS with teachers so they can learn from their, from the previous, previous year. I'm going to turn it over to...
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Could you explain to the audience what a PLC is?
Yes. Sorry. So PLC is professional learning community.
Right.
And that's when teachers, should I be talking to the camera?
Whatever you want.
That's when teachers have an opportunity to get together, to collaborate. As you know, being a teacher, you're often alone in your classroom, so it's very important that they have dedicated time each week and every month to come together and collaborate.
And we, I'm sorry, it's my turn now for a question. Sorry. We're gonna, you collaborate, collaborate with all three schools together, I'm assuming?
No. All three schools, yes.
So typically, a PLC is within, within a school.
Okay.
So I'm meeting with the third-grade team at Jefferson.
Team as them.
There are some opportunities on professional development days where we come together.
You come together, but as a PLC, it's school-wide. Okay. Thank you. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Tim has provided some wonderful Peaky sessions for the whole district.
All right. So I have glasses and notes because I'm a little bit older than these people here, so bear with me as I go through my, my notes here. So I'm Karen McKinnon. I'm the district literacy coach. So I've, I think it's my eighth year here, so I'm a little further in the process than, than Tim is, but I'll go through my slides, set up, some things are similar and some things are a little bit different. But, so my role as a literacy coach, I have some bullets here that'll pop up. So the way that I, I see it is, I kind of view myself much like a coach on a field of a, of a sporting event, that, that my job is really to help teachers to perform their best. And the way that I see that is that I feel like I really need to build a relationship of trust where I view myself as a partner with them, and I see my job as to really collaborate, work together, mutual respect, where we're really working towards a goal, the same goal that we're striving to, to work together. It's, it's job-embedded professional development. There's a lot of research out there right now that although teachers really like to go to one-shot PD out of district, it feels good to them, and I, I support them in that effort, but it doesn't sustain long-term change for teachers. And so there's a lot of research about coaching and this job-embedded professional development that we, we see more change and growth over time by, by job-embedded PD, and that's kind of the role of a, of a coach, that we, we build in the opportunity for reflection and for this partnership that leads to, to better teaching. And that's really what I see my, my, my job as, that our goals are for student improvement. That's what teachers want for their kids, is, is they want their kids to improve, and that's what I see my job as, is to really helping them help their teachers, help their, excuse me, their students to, to do better. So that's what, that's how I view my role as, as a literacy coach. I follow the same coaching cycle that, that Tim follows, so I do my two-day rotations at each building, I'm traveling around. I don't have mine memorized like Tim does off the top of his head, so I, when I leave a building, I look at my calendar and I have it in there, and I know where I'm going the next day. So I will not recite my rotations for you, but I do the same thing, modeling, co-teaching and/or observing. I think one of the nice things about modeling lessons for teachers, and I always say to them, it's not about me going up there and, and modeling a perfect lesson, it's a demonstration. Because a lot of times when teachers are teaching, they're really focused on what they're doing, and sometimes they don't, it's hard for them to focus on their kids. And when we talk about the student-centered learning, it's the same thing for literacy as it is for math. I want them to look at the kids and watch their kids, and it's hard because they're thinking about what they're doing and trying to watch what their kids are doing, and if they don't have to do the teaching, they can then really focus on their kids. And so I like them, for me to come in and, and teach for them because they can then really spend the time focusing on their kids and see how they're reacting to the instruction. I always tell the teachers that we're not only responsible for the teaching, we're responsible for the learning. And so we have to really focus on that piece as well. And so the modeling of the lessons, the demonstration lessons are, are just as much about observing their students as they are about observing me and how I'm delivering the instruction. Again, teams and individual teachers, the PLCs, and the same for Tim as for me. I hope you guys are taking a look at the pictures too. We didn't even point out the pictures. But you'll see lots of groups of kids and teachers there. You'll see the foundations lessons with them. I'm sure most of you live in classrooms, but lots of groups of kids gathered on the rugs, doing collaborative work. I'll talk a little bit about the programs and how that's a really big part of the, our programs that we have here. So our ERA programs. We have lots of things underway here in literacy. We have foundations. We are year, I think, gosh, three or four maybe for foundations, that is our phonics program that we have now for K1, 2, and 3. This year, we have brought onboard Michael Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Program. So what we have done over the years is tried to be really responsive to data in literacy. When I came to the district, we had a strong data piece in place that was set up from Lee Scott before I even got here, of looking at data. And that's what really brought us to foundations, realizing that we didn't have a systematic phonics program, and the kids were struggling with it, with phonics. We, we had DIBELS data that was showing us that, that the kids were not phonetically intact, and so that's what brought us to foundations. After a couple of years with foundations, looking at data, we really realized that although foundations has a phonemic awareness component to it, phonemic awareness is one sub-skill in phonics, it, it wasn't strong enough. Our, our DIBELS data was showing us in fact that the kids were not doing well enough in phonemic awareness. They weren't secure in that skill. So after lots of conversations with teachers and always taking their feedback and looking at the data, we brought in another phonemic awareness piece to our, to our programs, and the kindergarten and first grade teachers have been doing that with all the kids. Now, they started it in kindergarten last year, and now everyone's been doing it K1 this year. It's 10 minutes. It's relatively quick. It's real skill drill kind of thing, whole group. It can also be brought into small group for additional intervention, and the feedback is great. We saw tremendous results in the kindergarten classes that were using it last year. Data was like through the roof. So we brought that in, and, and the feedback from teachers is great. They're really feeling like the kids are definitely really understanding the phonemic awareness having, getting that skill. So we brought that in this year as well, so that's good. We have our Making Meaning and Being a Writer, which are our core reading and writing programs that have, were year two for grades K to three, and year three for grades four, I think. So we're really pleased with, with those programs. The teachers are doing well. They're definitely really loving the program. It, we went through the literacy committee like Tim is doing with the math committee, and we're really responsive. It was before Colleen's time, so Alan led that committee with, with me, and provides a great vertical as well as horizontal alignment for the district. The teachers report that the kids are doing so much real authentic reading and writing on a daily basis. The writing piece really increased the amount of writing that the kids are doing, something that I think is going to really help us on MCAS, not that that's the be-all and end-all, but will help our kids in general with the amount of writing that is expected of them in their lives in general, the joy of writing, that we're not getting as much of the reluctant writers, the no, I don't want to write, the no, I hate writing, the no, I don't have anything to write about. Teachers are reporting that that has definitely changed a lot for our kids. The other thing that's really wonderful about our... The other thing that's really wonderful about our reading and writing programs is, and one of the things that attracted us to the programs, is it's a huge social and emotional learning component that's built right into these programs. And so during the course of teaching the content, they're building all of those social emotional learning strategies right into it. So there's, you know, things like turning and looking at the speaker built right into it, acting responsibly, thinking about how your words affect other people, built right into the instruction when you're teaching them how to, you know, read and, and write, built right into the program. So that piece is nice because we are time-challenged in the elementary schools for sure. We don't have a lot of free time. The teachers really, really struggle with time for everything, so that's one thing that is very nice about our programs. Professional development. We really have focused professional development over the last couple of years on program implementation. It's definitely been a big part of my role, and we've been fortunate that administration has supported the importance of program implementation in the fact that, that the programs that we've purchased, we've always purchased PD from the company. So it hasn't been, let's just buy in the program and drop it in your lap and, and let you just kind of, you know, do what you can with it. So this year and last year, we've had professional development from the Center for the Collaborative Classroom, which is the company that, that puts out the Making Meaning and Being a Writer. So that's been in the form of lesson study, which is a really great form of professional development where we have an expert from the company come in and she actually models lesson planning. One would think that when you have a scripted program, that when you open it up and it says, you know, day one, that the teachers can just go off and teach, but it really is, the lesson planning is still very, very important, and teachers really need to spend a lot of time learning how to plan out their lessons and be really mindful of the intricacies involved in the lesson. So she models the lesson planning and models then the teaching of the lesson with our actual kids, not a video of other kids from some other district, but she comes in and we watch her do that and then have the ability to debrief, and that has been received so well by the teacher, by the teachers here in Rockland. They love seeing her do that, and it's my recommendation that we continue to do that next year as well. It's a very, very powerful form of professional development. So we've done the lesson study, focused on the lesson planning, and a, a big focus of professional development this year that, that will really continue is this whole idea of verification of instruction. And it goes back to the whole connection with being responsible for the learning, not just the teaching. And so how do we verify that kids are actually learning what we're teaching? And it's about collecting data when we're teaching the kids. And so when you're, when the kids are turning and talking on the rug, how are we listening to what they're saying and how am I taking notes and recording, verifying that they're learning what it is that I'm trying to teach them? And so that's been a big focus of professional development, not only with Making Meaning and Being a Writer, but also with foundations. When I have my skills that I'm teaching them this week, how am I verifying that they're actually learning them, and when they're not, then what do I do? So how do I then plan for intervention? How do I differentiate? How do I then move forward and, and make sure that the, that the kids are with me? I, I talk about the train analogy all the time. If I'm driving the train and I'm down the track, how do I make sure that I'm not leaving kids at the stations, you know, as I, as I, as I'm going along? So it's a big focus of, of my work this year in terms of professional development. And then also, the last two things that I've been focusing on are conferring and assessments. At the end of last year, I gave a PD survey to all the teachers, and I asked them what they felt like they needed help with in terms of their professional development for this year. And those were two big things that came back, teachers saying that they felt like they needed a little bit more support with conferring, both in reading, independent reading conferences, and also writing conferences, and also assessments in our programs, just looking through them a little bit more, excuse me, being a little unsure about when to administer, how to administer the effectiveness of them. And so those are things that, two things that I've been working on during the PLC time when I have the grade level time. And then also December 14th, I think our next half-day, not our next half-day, but our December half-day is going to be a day for assessment for the teachers so that we can dive into the assessments and Making Meaning and Being a Writer, spend a little bit more time really looking carefully at, at those. So with the professional development, you know, I try and be responsive to the teachers and their needs and where they feel they have gaps in their, in their learning as well.
I shadowed for a bit at, just a day at Esten last year. I actually want to head back again this year, but while I was there, they were talking about Making Meaning and showing me exactly what it was, and I got to watch as we did in a lesson with the students, and it was fascinating. It really did spill it out for the teacher, but it also sort of gave her that opportunity to interact with them, and, and they were raving about it while I was sitting there, the teachers, so I thought it was cool that now here you are talking about it, and I actually got to see it.
It was amazing that the kids could tell you what, it's not just the teacher.
Exactly. It was like a whole room of all of us, you know, and they knew that I was trying to learn from them, so they certainly told me exactly what, you know, it was really interesting for me to sit there and see.
That's great.
I have a clarification question again. What is DIBELS and what does it do for us?
Sorry. So DIBELS is a, it's a phonics screener, basically. So it's administered to, we administer it to all, there we are, right here, assessment, administered to all kindergarten and first grade students. In the past, we had done it, administered to all kindergarten through fourth grade students, but this year with the adoption of iReady, we pulled back a little bit. We want to avoid over-assessing, so we just did it for kindergarten and first grade students because iReady is a computer-delivered assessment, and I was just concerned about young kids on the computer, how accurate it was going to be. So we, we continued to do DIBELS for K-1. I think it was the right decision, and I think we ended up administering DIBELS to second grade students that were kind of below benchmark on iReady because it, we just weren't getting the, kind of getting the results that we wanted to from iReady. So it's a phonics screener, gives us a little bit more information. And like for the second graders that were below benchmark, so iReady told us, okay, they're below benchmark, but now we were like, hmm, all right, so we need a little bit more information. So DIBELS, we were then able to administer that, and it gives us a little bit more direction in terms of, is it their, you know, phonemic awareness, is it their phonics, is it their fluency? And so just gives us a little bit deeper dive so that we know what to do in terms of, you know, looking at data meetings, which we do have three times a year. I have spreadsheets that I create that have all, that has all the different data points and allows us to really dive in and plan guided reading groups, which is a way that our teachers are differentiating in the classroom for students. So in addition to the core programs that we have, all the classroom teachers are pulling guided reading groups to differentiate and really target small group instruction in the classrooms. These teachers are busy in literacy.
They are.
They are very busy. They work very, very hard, so I give them a lot of credit for, for what they do in literacy. It is a, I mean, they could do it all day long. Sorry, Tim.
Teachers are always busy.
They could do it all day long, literacy. So they're pulling guided reading groups, and then at data meetings, we're also looking at interventions. And so there are, in each of the buildings, there's a full-time Title I teacher, and we also this year have a Title I paraprofessional. So I work with Title I teachers and we plan Title I interventions. And we have Lexia that we use as an intervention, which is another computer intervention, but we also plan groups using LLI, which is leveled literacy intervention. We have foundations, small groups. We also have some homegrown interventions that we had created a couple of years ago that, and they're called instructional routines, that we created our own through some work that we did with Massachusetts, the MTSS Literacy Academy. We have those interventions that we do. And we've just have started using a new intervention program called Phonics for Reading. Esten, just Diane Hayes, she just started using that, and the other two buildings are going to start. That's an intervention just for third grade kids who show some deficits in phonics. And so we're really working hard with the Title I interventionists to try and provide some supports for those kids that the classroom teachers just can't meet the needs of.
Right.
So there's just a lot happening in literacy, trying to meet the needs of these wide range of, of kids. And I'm like going to get the hook here because I feel like I'm talking forever. M-CAS, we do a lot, do a lot with M-CAS as well. M-CAS is a little bit different than math because although it's standards-based, if the kids are not reading at grade level, it's very hard to tell if they don't understand the standard or if they couldn't read the passage. So we look very closely at the kids in terms of their, whether they're reading at grade level. That has to be our first level of attack. If they're not reading at grade level, we have to try and get them reading at grade level before we can really analyze whether they understand the standard or not. So I create what I call watch lists, and so these kids are kids who are reading at grade level but not performing well on the M-CAS. Those kids now we can analyze, we can look at the standards and say, okay, why are they not passing the M-CAS? Because they should be, right? They're reading at grade level. So we can then dive a little bit deeper and look at the standards that way. Kids that are not reading at grade level, well then our, our point of attack is getting them reading at grade level. So that's when we look at the interventions and what can we do to help support and get them at grade level. So we, we, you know, look at M-CAS in terms of preparing the teachers by looking at the data, looking at the scores, and then we also look at it in terms of reading, and then we also look at it in terms of writing. So for example, on last year's M-CAS, you could get 17 points for writing. So we look at how many points the kids could get for their writing. So, you know, if you get five points out of 17 on your writing, then we have to look at the writing and say, okay, there's a deficit here in writing. What happened with your writing? Sometimes they release the writing samples, so we can actually look at the writing samples, like in fourth grade, and we can say, all right, we can diagnose and say what the problem was here. Was it not volumes enough of writing? Did they not understand the, you know, the, the prompt? Or we have to go back to their reading level. If they're reading well below grade level, they couldn't understand the passage. So therefore, they couldn't answer the question. So then we have to go back to getting the reading level up to grade level so they can understand the passage. So it's really, you know, a complex process to, to try and, and figure out, but we work really hard with the teachers to try and, I see a question for me.
Yeah. So they only sometimes release a writing sample? So if a kid falls well below where he should in the literacy part, in the writing, they're only occasionally releasing that sample?
They don't release everything, no, because sometimes they reuse the questions.
How are you supposed to tell? What did they expect people to do here? Or are they just going to collect 20 more years of stuff and wipe it out and do this all over again?
The test feedback definitely gives us clues as to what the strengths and needs are of the student, but I, you see what you're saying. If we had the actual assay and could see, yeah, and could see what the student did, it would be helpful.
Your, your suggestion in this and that and strength tells me nothing if I don't have the piece of paper in front of me with what that student wrote.
Right. And some of it, even when you can see what they wrote, you have to go back to if they, their reading level and if they didn't understand the passage.
Right.
Right? And so then, yeah.
They want us to take these tests, and they want to judge everything that every school system does and every teacher does on these tests, yet they're not giving enough to support. To me, that's, you're not getting, you're not getting the full info that you need to guide a student, and that's ridiculous.
And I feel like they'll give us more and more over time. It's just the beginning of the, this M-CAS 2.0, this, you know, so I feel like every year we get more and more information, so I feel like we have more than we had last year, and next year we'll have more than we have this year, but, yeah, it is, it can be frustrating.
The commissioner's hearing about it from a lot of people, and I, I would say, is it safe to say that this year was better than last year?
Yes. And they are shortening the test.
It's funny that for 20 years, we heard it's all about the data and how great this
is, and then we wake up one day and decide, eh, we're just going to change the test and those data, that data doesn't matter, you know? Yeah.
They go through a learning cycle.
It is. And they did shorten the test, there's one less assay next year than there was last year, so they're being responsive, I think, to some, to some things, but, yeah, it's certainly a very imperfect system, but...
Having some experience, it changes as years go by.
It does.
It changes and changes and changes.
For sure.
I think all we can do is the best that you're doing.
God bless you folks.
Yeah, no, you guys are, I'm just saying.
It's frustrating, yeah.
How can you do anything with very minimal?
Right.
You know?
Yep. And then we also prepare the students the best that we can. It was a big jump this year for the kids, the third grade kids taking a test on the Chromebook. So Lisa and I actually collaborated quite a bit to help the, the kids get ready for taking the test on the Chromebook. So we hauled all the kids into the cafeteria together, all the kids in the third grade, everybody had a Chromebook, and we took them through the interface. It was a great collaboration between Lisa and I because she knows the technological interface, and we could go through and have them practice the test. We also collaborated to create the, some Google folders where the teachers were able to drop some practice M-CAS open response questions so that they had practiced typing, so they could get used to the character count and all of that. So, you know, there's a lot of things going on to help the kids be successful with that, but, you know, it's a, it's a team effort, but...
They accept that. Those students, they, they accept that facet in writing.
Many of them do.
Yeah.
Many of them really do. I mean, I, I think it's, it's a reality for them. The trackpad's a little bit confusing for some of the kids. It's a little bit of a different interface. I mean, I think a lot of them are, the phone and the iPad, so that, that piece took a little bit of, and, and I'm not a Chromebook, I'm an Apple girl, so Lisa had to do a lot of like, it's, it's two finger up, two finger down was a little bit, so she was the master of that, but...
I find that on my kids' Chromebooks as well. They laugh at me, Mom, come on, it's not, it's not the same as my laptop compared to their Chromebooks.
My fourth grader schools me in her, in her Chromebook all the time.
They definitely...
I'm a Mac guy.
We'll work, we'll work on that one.
We just met and just actually set up a trajectory for this year, because we started a little late last year, so we're going to start up, you know, right when we get back in January and do the same thing again with the third graders to kind of get them all set up. And the more exposure and practice they have with it, the, the better they'll be, but the, the kids are already on the Chromebooks now and they're, they're typing, and so they're, you know, they're, they're working on it now, but...
It's, it's becoming more natural for them to do all that stuff on Chromebooks because they do it that, they're doing it all the time that way now, you know? Like us, you know, oh, the A's over here, no, the E's over there. No, I'm not like that, I'm not that bad. Oh, yeah. A S D F, A K L S.
So that's literacy.
Well, thank you. Great job. Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Ryan, and I'm in charge of STEAM for the district, and STEAM has three parts. We do, I do science in the classroom, I do the STEAM program, which runs on the specialist program, and the third thing I do is instructional technology support. So first, we're going to talk about science with our classroom teachers. You know that we came a couple of years ago, some of you may remember, and we talked about adopting the FOSS, the FOSS Science Program in grades 3 and 4. And through a generous donation through the RAF, a, a large donor, a family made a large anonymous donation, and we were able to fund that, part of it with that money along with the district contribution, and we bought the entire thing. So far, we've implemented earth science and the physical science domains. Different from math and, and the literacy, we're rolling ours in a little slower over time because we are rolling them in at the same time that we're rolling in other programs. So we're doing that in a little bit of a slower roll-in, and that's making it a little easier for teachers because teachers didn't go to school to learn science, they mostly went to school for literacy or math. So there's a lot of content knowledge that they're learning, and the thing about the content knowledge is that if you looked at it, you'd say, wow, I learned that in high school. And yet, it's, it's content knowledge now for the elementary level. So it's challenging. So the, the first part about it is we always start with a hands-on investigation. So in the lower left-hand corner, you can see the bottom two pictures are the, this is a, a fourth grade project right here where they're actually wiring a circuit, and they're actually making what is like a junkyard magnet, so they're making an electromagnet. And the one next to it, you can see they're working with the balance, that's third grade. So we have really, really nice, high-quality materials. They're using the same kinds of equipment that scientists in the real world use. So through those hands-on investigations, they're learning like a base piece of information about science, and from there, we can move into high-quality reading selections. There's the, they're beautiful books and they're nonfiction, and they support the literacy program, and the kids are engaging in high-quality content and, and learning about it. But they can learn about it, where we learned about science mostly through books when we were in the younger grades, they're learning about it first through a hands-on investigation so that when they read it in that abstract model, they're understanding it because it ties right back to the hands-on investigation that they did. Another piece of this is the science notebooks, and you can see an example in the upper right-hand corner, and in that, the, what kids are doing is they're synthesizing that information that they're learning by then having their own science notebook. So they have a science notebook, each day they turn to a new page and they record their data, they make observations, they draw conclusions on what they've learned. And so just like scientists in the real world, they're constantly taking what they know... And so just like scientists in the real world, they're constantly taking what they know and then change, understand it through more learning. They're changing what they understand to a higher level. So you can see an example, so they learn about the A, B, C, D's of scientific modeling. A is that it's accurate. B is that it's big, so you can see those pictures are big. C is that it's colorful. And D is that there's lots of details. So they draw little arrows and point out different parts of their models. And then again, they write a summary or of what their learning is. So this is used as a formative assessment. So that helps teachers understand how much kids understood from the lesson. And then they can figure misconceptions and help them understand even more. Another piece of this, I'm just gonna jump down one, a couple more, is the last part is the lower right-hand corner. He's taking an online MCAS-style assessment. So now, last year was actually the first real test for science MCAS. Before that, they were doing a hybrid test of the old standards and the new standards. And even before that, they were still testing the old standards. So last, this past year, the fifth grade MCAS was the first time they tested the, completely the three through five new standards. So we had some data, so as we get more and more examples and they release test questions and we have that opportunity to see how they're assessing it, we're building MCAS-style assessments that have actually sometimes the exact same question or a similarly styled question. So kids are comfortable with the way they're asking those questions. And then we can also, long-term, actually compare how our fifth graders are doing or when they take the test in fifth grade with how our third and fourth graders are doing on similar questions. And thus far, the data's been really nice. Our third and fourth graders are understanding the content at a level that is similar to how the fifth graders have been tested on it. So, and, but they're third and fourth grade questions, you know?
So this is all inquiry-based?
Yes, absolutely. It's all hands-on, they work in small groups. They work in groups of like three, four, sometimes five kids, it depends on the investigation. But they, they, they get a, you know, a set of directions that they follow. So the teacher does a mini lesson so that they get an overview of it. But kids are learning how to follow directions and do the entire experiment themselves. Some of the things that I provide, I provide pacing guides. So different than ELA in math, science is not taught every day. It's like a two or three-day-a-week thing. So, and so in order to pace it out over the course of the entire year or the period that each domain is taught, I provide pacing guides. So by week, so they can be on target. It says, you know, which active investigations they should be working on, which reading selections they should be doing. So that's, that teachers have had good feedback from that because with school holidays and, and different things happening, it's, since it's not an everyday thing, you really have to kinda pace it out to make sure you're done before the end.
Do you allow a preservation of their experiments? You know, preserving their experiments so that they don't have to go back and rebuild it every time?
So most of the activities are that they're, they're done in that class period. And then they're broken down because, and you want them to break them down because like, so for the, for instance, like if they're wiring and stuff like that, you don't wanna keep it wired because they've already figured it out once. You want them to have that opportunity to then wire it again and add some piece of information. So like they're doing series circuits and then they learn parallel circuits, for instance, or something like that. Yeah, so it's, it is, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's more the thing that they add to that learning and have the opportunity to then interact with it again. And the other thing I do is I, I plan with teachers. So I might help them just even break out the materials and set up for the experiments. I might meet with them and then go through the teacher's manual and kinda go through and talk about pacing it out and figuring out how they're gonna, how they're gonna, you know, the format of their lesson. I help teachers go in, I go in, I co-teach with them sometimes. I model teach with them sometimes. I agree with what Karen and Tim said. That it's really important that teachers have the opportunity to watch student learning, not just be the teacher. Because when you see how students learn and you see what makes them, what makes the light bulb go off, then it's easier for them to replicate that later. So we do, I do things like that. And so, and also, I meet with them during P L C time and science is one of the things that I talk about. The second thing I do is I work with the STEAM program. So you remember that a few years ago, you might, you might remember, like five years ago or so, we started, we wanted to do more with technology at the elementary level. We knew they weren't, they were in beta form, they weren't completely released. But we knew there were gonna be a really upgraded set of digital literacy and computer science standards. And computer science was new at the elementary level. It was, it was new pretty much everywhere, except for the high school level. So with that, I started by going into third and fourth grade during what would have been formerly like computer or library time on the specialist schedule. And we did digital literacy, so we did like, we, every kid got a Google account. We did Google Docs, we did Google Slides, we did research, and then we did coding and computer science. From there, recognizing that this was, there was, there was a real opportunity here, we were fortunate enough, the district funded one position. So I don't know if you know this, but every, the three elementary schools share two phys ed teachers, two art teachers, two music teachers. And that covers the schedule for all three schools. So the, we were able to have one hired the first year. And then last year, we hired our second STEAM teacher. So that's a real commitment on the district's part and wonderful because now the kids, every kid K to four, has STEAM once every six days. And then in addition to that, for a third of the year, they get a second STEAM class. So we've broken it up in this way. STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts and math. And for us, the arts is more the creativity and innovation part of it that leads to the great scientists and great thinkers that we have. So we've decided to go with focus on digital literacy, which is the Google Docs and research and all those sorts of things. Digital citizenship, which is staying safe online, as well as how to be a good digital citizen and be nice to people. Coding, so that's computer science. We code at both code.org and we code at Scratch, which is MIT's product. As well as, that's what we do with two through four. Foundationally though, elementary, I mean, I'm sorry, kindergarten kids are actually coding as well. And if you look in the picture, it's kind of in the second row middle, you'll see that kids have laid out what looks like, almost like, like blocks of code on paper. And they lay them out and it's like move forward, move left, move right, rotate, jump, hop. We even have some fun, like holiday-themed or season, seasonally-themed things that we're gonna be doing, like doing things like, like Thanksgiving, like for Thanksgiving, we can have the kids like flap like a turkey and some cute things like that. So the kindergartners did that last year with some, with also some in first grade as well. So we're taking them from that very concrete level of coding. And they, what they do is they lay out the layers of code and then they code their buddy. So then their partner then, yeah, yeah.
Using code.org for that, right?
Um, we do, once we get to second grade.
Okay.
So for kindergarten, first, they're doing it at a very concrete level. They're laying down those cards. And even we've taught them about repeat blocks. So if you're familiar with repeat blocks, it's even kinda funny because the kids will say, you know, you'll have a repeat five times block. And then, then some kid will be like, I'm gonna put the twirl in it. So they have to twirl five times in a row and then the kids are like, they're just so cute, you know? So they're, you know, they challenge each other and stuff like that too, so that's great.
And code.org, you can also look at the underlying code of the, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So that's an exciting thing for them to see what's, what's under the hood essentially. And then we also do, in the lower left-hand corner, you can see for coding, we also do like game board type coding. So again, really at a concrete level, kids understanding by being able to move and manipulate with their hands. And then eventually, they also, they eventually get to doing a computer-based.
And they love Legos too, don't they?
Yes, so that's some of our, we've been very fortunate. Again, through RAF got us started with the robotics and some of the engineering materials. And then the district has generously been able to fund us because, you know, STEAM programs require a budget. So we've been able to add to, we started out with some, that we were sharing among the schools, some materials. And now we're working toward having each school have their own set of materials. So you can see we have two kinds of engineering materials. So like in the top center, you can see we have the magnetic tiles, if you're familiar with those, if your kids have them at home. Or we have Legos. Or in the second row, the last one, we have vehicles. They can do like construction-type kits and make their, design their own vehicles and things like that. So we have those kinds of engineering materials for them to create. And then we also do engineering challenges where kids are challenged to do something. So in the top right, there's a good example of that, that we were just doing in the last couple of weeks, where kids get a set, you get, you get a set amount of stuff. You get this many straws and you get this length of tape. And you have to see if you can create something that's gonna support a mini pumpkin. So it's that kind of thing. One of the ones that I just loved that we did, and you can see it in the second row. First one is in honor of Fire Safety Month. Kids learned about fire safety and they learned about the technology involved in it as far as fire safety devices and smoke alarms and things like that. And then they talked about how, you know, every room needs to have a smoke detector and every house needs to have two exit points. So they actually, you can see them, they're designing houses and they're laying out a floor plan. And there's a, and you can't see it, but there's a penny in each room to, so they, where they designated their smoke detectors. And they have two exits in each one. So it's, it's a wide variety of engineering-type challenges that we're doing. And then some of the engineering challenges are such that, Tim talked about, about how the struggle, struggling a little is a good thing. So having challenges where they're struggling a little and they don't immediately know the answer. That's true of our coding, that's true of our engineering. And the great thing about what we've been able to do is the first week, they make a plan, they draw out whatever they think they're gonna try doing, they make it, and it may or may not work, because that's what happens in the real world, you know? Then the next time they come, they have an opportunity to rework that design. Think about what worked. They get a chance to walk around and see what other kids did, what worked for them. What, what about their support, you know, their supports made it more structurally sound? So they share all these ideas and they come back and they have an opportunity to create another one. Because nothing is ever really done in the world of engineering. You're constantly, or research or anything like that, you're constantly working to improve. So those are many of the sorts of things we're doing. You can see some of the robots, a second, second one. And on the bottom, we've got a robot. And in the top left, we also have a robot. And again, some of these were the start that we got with a Scott McKinley grant from the Rockland Education Foundation. And then we've also been able to add through our own district budget.
There's a new robotics initiative. And I get, I don't know if you've seen it, it just came out like in the last week or so. Have you, I don't know, have you seen it? If not, I'll get you the information.
Yeah, send me the information, I would appreciate that.
There's some funding out there for robotics.
Oh, great, okay, that's great.
Said the magic word.
Oh, and so...
Funding, they were always...
Yeah, I know.
Wetworth is doing something.
Oh, great, no, I have not seen that, so I'd appreciate that, that would be really nice. And so the ways that I work, so this is Debbie, what? Okay, Debbie Hogan and Rachel Mack. So those are the two teachers that work with this program. So we've been working, so the first year we did it, it was, it got expanded to K to four. And if you think about it, we've been doing third and fourth grade mostly and a little bit in second. So as we move up, those kindergartners up through the grades every year for three, four years running, we're gonna up the game. We're upping the ante because those kindergartners have seen coding in kindergarten at a very concrete level. First grade, they build on it with some, with some more game board-based type stuff, second grade. So they're just, by the time they're in fourth grade, we're gonna be doing something very different than we were doing a few years earlier because of the benefit of having a K to four program. And because it also, it also supports the science programs. The science standards are actually science, technology and engineering. So we support that part of the standards. We also do the digital literacy and computer science standards. We also support the English Language Arts standards through writing, research and reading for information. And then finally, we support the mathematics program. At the lower levels, they do some, some math with math manipulatives in sort of an engineering sort of way. And at the upper levels, it's more through the coding program because kids are actually turning in angles and stuff like that. So they really have to understand that a right angle is forty-five degrees and what it means. And so we actually do it like really bodily kinesthetically. We have them jump up and stand up and we have them rotate with their bodies so they have a sense of what all that means. And the final part that I work in is the technology integration. So that's essentially technology in the classroom. So we, you know that we have Chromebooks and iPads. Primarily Chromebooks is a grade two through four initiative. And we've been very, very fortunate that teachers pretty much have access to Chromebooks whenever they need them in grades two through four. We now have enough devices at those grade levels that teachers are using them for math and they're using them for reading and writing regularly. And then the grades, with some grant money that Colleen and Karen and some other people were able to put together last year, we were then able to buy some additional iPads. And now every single K to two classroom has five iPads in it. We also were able to purchase some additional ones for special needs groups as well. So that's been very exciting. So everyone has devices that are regularly integrated in their classrooms. We use, as you know, G Suite for education. So we use Google Docs and Slides and, and everything like that. We use Google Classroom as the portal. One of our things that we were able to do last year in that collaboration that Karen mentioned earlier is every third and fourth grade classroom is using Google Classroom now as like, kinda like that central portal for assignments for kids. So kids, it's kinda one-stop shopping, which is really, makes it much easier for kids. They know they go there, they can find their assignment, they can find their links to wherever they're supposed to go. And it's all right there. And it's not just for Google tools, you can integrate any other tools as well. So some of the things I do with technology integration, I model best practices. I go in and I co-teach with classroom teachers. I provide one-on-one, I also do P L Cs for science and for technology integration. As well as we have our own separate STEAM P L C that meets every week as well. Or on, once every six days on the cycle. Once a month, I meet with grade levels. And then I provide one-on-one and small group support beyond that. It could be during the prep, it could be after school, whatever they need. It could be right in the classroom. And then the final thing we do is we offer workshops and courses. And the workshops, I organize all the technology-related workshops. But people like, say Sarah Halagadis, who you might know, teaches workshops for Aspen. So she does how the basics of using Aspen, how to run reports, different workshops like that. So she does those and I just help organize those along with Joyce Curseless, our Title I secretary. As well as we offer courses. So I've been really, really excited with where we've gone with courses. We used to do very face-to-face courses. It was a very typical college model where you went, you spent time and then there were projects and stuff that you did. As teachers have gotten really good at using technology, we also need to differentiate for them. So it's no longer kind of a one-size-fits-all, we're really differentiating for them. So we moved to more of a hybrid model. And the two we're doing right now is Google Level One certification and Google Level Two teacher certification. So we're offering both of those at the same time. We have thirty, I think it's thirty-one students in the class. We started running it last month, earlier, really earlier this month. They did a little bit the previous month, but earlier this month. It'll run through right before December break. And they're getting, they're doing the modules, the online Google modules, which teach them all the intricacies of the Google tools. That's one portion of it. And they, and they go for certification, which is a three-hour online test.
Do you have P D Ps for that?
They get three credits toward a lane change and they get forty-five P D Ps. And so they get the Google certification after they take the test. The other component of it is that we do online forums. So recognizing that Google tools are not the only thing we're doing, but we use assessment tools. We use tools that are specific to our English learners, tools that are specific to our special needs students, communication tools, interactive lesson tools, like all these different kinds of tools. We have individual forums for those and they participate in those. And that's where they get an opportunity to talk PK to twelve with any other teachers who are also in that program, who are also taking the course. So they, you know, they read about interactive tools, say for instance. They pick some that they wanna try out and then they write about what, what they did. And they even post questions to the rest of the group. And then the rest of the group goes in and comments and, hey, I had, you know, I had that same challenge. This is what I did to address it. So it's teachers learning from teachers in an online forum. And then the final piece that makes it more hybrid is that they do three lesson shares. So that's like their final project. They build three lessons based on the Google modules that they did, based on anything that they did in the forums. And they do three lessons. One is shared with an administrator, so that could be a principal or an assistant principal. Or it could be, and this is PK to twelve, by the way. And, or it could be like one of the coaches or it could be a department head. So that's the administrator. The second one is they share with a colleague. So if it's a third-grade teacher, they might share it with another third-grade teacher and they come in and observe the lesson and, and watch it and, and learn from it. It also could be a sped teacher that would like to try that. And then the third one is me. So that's the way that we spread the wealth essentially and get more people to know about these great, great new things that people are discovering.
Right.
So, and then you can see some pictures of some kids working on. All the tech, great, we really do have some really nice technology in this district. So all of this is around student-centered learning. And I think it really goes with what Tim and Karen have been saying and their, and what they've talked about too. You know, we, we don't teach coding because we think every kid's gonna be a computer scientist. And we don't teach engineering challenges because we think every kid's gonna be an engineer. It's because we're building, we're building in a mindset and a set of skills that are gonna help them in anything they do. So one of them is collaboration, that they're working in groups and that they're able to solve problems together and work through them. The second one is communication and that they're talking to each other. They could be talking online or they could be, or they could be communicating obviously right in person. And going to what Karen said about the social-emotional component of her program, about the social emotional component of her program, one of the things I've loved the most in both STEAM and science is the way kids respond to each other. So they're, they're, they're not saying, you know, ah, I like that idea, you know? They're saying, oh, I see what you're doing there. I've got another twist that I might like to add to it. So, you know, in addition to what you've done, maybe we should try this too, you know? And so they're supporting each other's ideas and building upon them through all the work that they've been doing, the communication that they've been doing, learning in Karen's programs. Another piece of it is critical thinking. And that's getting back to the coding and the engineering mindset. We're building in kids thinking in new and novel ways. And then the final thing is the creativity and innovation.
And you did add coping to that, too.
What's that?
You know, succeeding the first time adding coping, right? They still need to note that it's okay.
Yeah.
And pick up our pieces and go back and learn.
Absolutely.
You're not just going to throw in the towel and call it a day.
Absolutely. And kids, and kids get that. Like they get that. You know what I mean? They, they get that they're not going to always get something the first time.
Right.
So that having that opportunity to go back and rework and keep going is, that's huge, you know?
Huge, right.
It's really huge. And that we have the time and the programs in place to make sure that kids have plenty of opportunities to do these kinds of things.
And one of the critical things too is integrating, you know, literacy and math and any of that, because you need to document all your, all your findings as you go along.
Absolutely.
So as they build things, you know, they want to make sure that, you know, that's, I think, part of the education that needs to be done is documenting what you've done, the way you've done and any, you know, and any challenges you might have, what you might want to do from, from that point on.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And planning it out.
Planning it out.
We have planning as part of our process.
Before you run away, I have two things.
She's in heels. There's no running.
Lisa looked like she was getting ready to get away from the podium, but it's not happening yet. Two quick things. One, I think you nailed a home run with Rachel and Deb.
Oh, they are amazing.
They are amazing.
So wonderful.
I have not seen an elementary student who doesn't like them. In fact, they all love them and can't wait for it.
Yes.
My girls talk about, who do you have to steam this week? Oh, I have Mrs. Mac. Oh, I have Mrs. Hogan. Like, you know, I wonder what we're going to do. And it's great. I love hearing that. But the big thing on the, on the technology integration. So this is a perfect example of why the Google is great and why STEAM can interact with other, how you support math and stuff. Last year, we took the kids on a vacation that took them away from vacation because it's significantly cheaper to travel. And we said to our oldest teachers, hey, Isabel's going to be out for a week. What do you want her to do? Well, they're in the middle of working on a fraction section in math. So she said, well, take her Chromebook, because we brought Isabel's Chromebook, and have her do a Google slide presentation, because she's already teaching the class how to do them, on fractions of different things using the pictures from your trip.
Oh, cool.
So then Isabel made like a twenty-four slide fraction presentation of her Disney trip. Like, this is three quarters of my family in this picture. And it was like, pretty cool to, to see. And there she is, taking her math, taking a little bit of literacy, taking her tech, throwing it all together and emailing it to her teacher while we're away. Like, do I need to add anything? What do you think? And coming right back. And it's like, she didn't miss anything. She, she did not miss the fraction component because she was working it while away and got to contribute and then talk about it in class. And I think more and more, that's where things are going. I mean.
Just to speak to your point about STEAM, kids love STEAM class?
Nothing.
That's how we're trying to adapt the math in the LA and other classes because they investigate, they experience, they hands-on at the beginning of class where these teachers don't know how to STEAM and they're learning with the kids. And that's how it makes it interesting for the kids. So I think that's why they love it so much.
Yeah.
I think it's hands-on.
Perfect.
Right. For those visual kids, gets them out of that book and touch them with their hands.
I also hope that we understand how, how much we appreciate the three of you.
Absolutely.
Colleen, because you have a very complex job. We are asking you to be the visionaries for these three very complex disciplines. Lisa, you in particular, you're covering so many different disciplines, it's not even funny. But I would argue that your discipline and pedagogy is learning more from, our, our elementary teachers who are now learning a brand-new science curriculum are also learning to teach backwards. The kids get a problem, we say solve it, then we help them solve it. As opposed to, we tell them how to solve it and then have them practice it. It's a very different process. And the three of you not only have to know what it is we're trying to get the kids to do, but you have to have the people's skills to inspire and make all of our teachers better. Because if our teachers don't get better, we want to, you know, that's where it all happens. Then the kids don't have a more rich experience. So you three are extremely important to us. It's why I wanted to highlight their work and highlight, highlight the work that Colleen is doing with them. Because you play such an important role in our, in the educational process here in Rockland. So I thank you very much for your work and we appreciate each one of you very, very much.
Thank you.
And Dr. Kron always says that students don't learn the way they used to. So we have to.
Learn to teach them the way that.
Instructional practices.
Right.
To accommodate that in the future with our students, so.
Thank you.
And if I could extend that to the classroom teachers too, they've, they've learned a lot of new things over the last three years.
Absolutely.
There's been a lot of curriculum changes. It's a lot of content. And they've really, they've just been so enthusiastic and wonderful, so.
Yeah, they're doing, it's remarkable the amount of new material we've asked them to take on.
Yeah. If you, if you get a chance, I don't know if you have, is a, I've also investigated Khan Academy.
Yeah, we use Khan Academy. So we don't use it at the elementary level, but we use it at the middle and high school level.
Yeah, fine. That's good.
Absolutely. It's wonderful.
Yeah, they have a good.
And you know what's nice about it is you can link it to your Google account. So there's a lot of like, Google does a lot of other things for you as far as like getting you into accounts automatically.
Yeah, they have some real good stuff out there.
And next year, we're talking about the middle school shift.
Okay.
As we work towards that.
Good, good. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you all.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready? Onto the next item is old business fundraisers completed. We have the preschool PAC did a cookie dough fundraiser for, they earned $2,566.05. The Esten PAC did Meadow Farms. They earned $3,787.90. They also did a charity volleyball game. They earned $800, in which I noticed when we were reading this, is they donated $400 to the food pantry and $400 to Holiday Magic. And I love that. I think that goes to us being townwide, town pride. So thank you, Esten PAC. And the class of two thousand and twenty sold class shirts. They earned $661.75. And the class of two thousand and twenty and twenty-one did a cookie dough sale for $919.80. So, congrats to all of you. Good job earning your monies. The transportation update, is that to you, Dr. Kron?
Yes. A few weeks ago, it was asked that we include an update about transportation on a regular basis. So we're putting this on the agenda once a month. Just going to give you a general overview of how things are going. And we'll say they're going very well. First Student has been very responsive. Since adding the two buses, we've increased our overall ridership by one hundred and six students who are now being served on buses who were not being served. We have decreased travel times overall, specifically at Memorial Park. We've cut Memorial Park's travel time from fifty-five to thirty-eight minutes on average. The Jefferson Kindergarten was spending twenty-eight point five minutes per trip and they're now down to fourteen point five. And Memorial Park Kindergarten has gone from twenty-six point five minutes to eighteen minutes. So overall, travel times have decreased and the ridership has increased. And we are very pleased with First Student to this point. And we're going to continue, continue working with them. And I will continue providing you updates on a monthly basis. Okay?
How did the transition grow as far as, I know you had to move a lot of people around and redistricting kind of the, the rides and so on. Did that all go?
Overall, I would say it went very, very well.
Yeah, good.
Very well. Of course, some people weren't happy that they didn't have their favorite bus driver.
Oh, true, yes.
There was a little of that. And that's, and I understand, I understand that. We're still working out some of those kinks. But I will say, all the work that Patty Penny put into it and Jane and our, our partners at First Student, they did a very good job of making, making that smooth.
Wonderful.
Yep.
I think that it, it shows a difference in that First Student is willing to work with us. So even if we have questions on the not-so-favorite bus driver or whatnot, they're right there to jump in to sort of help support us and figure it out.
Yeah.
And I think that's huge. Or I don't think we had that before.
Yeah. And thank you to families and parents who have been flexible. And their bus stops may have moved a little bit, their times may have shifted and they've been very cooperative and we appreciate that.
I agree.
Appreciate that.
They've adjusted more.
Right. So far, so good.
And again, thank you to Patty Penny and Jane Hackett who did the lion's share of the work on this transition.
And sorry that we made you do it.
No, no problem.
Okay. Onto new business, homeschooling.
Homeschooling, yeah. We just had two, we had two homeschooling applications that have come through since we, I believe we had the school committee approve twenty-four students' plans. These are two additional. And I recommend adopting and approving these two homeschooling plans.
Okay. Do we know, I'm sorry. Do we want a second and then I'll?
Yes.
Do we know if they were on this last year and they just sort of fell behind in signing up? Do you?
I believe that both of these are new.
Okay. That's what I wondered. Okay.
These are both new? Yeah, I thought so. I think both of these are new.
Why are they late?
One, we were sort of having some communication issues, trying to get ahold of them to get the materials that we needed. So for example.
That concerns me.
Yeah, yeah.
It concerns me because how's Apollo Three going to be in other places?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'll be very blunt with the committee and with the public. I mean, homeschooling is not something, the state really ties our hands on homeschooling.
I understand that.
We pretty much have to approve these programs.
I understand that.
And anyone comes forward and says they want to do it. It is concerning. I have concerns. I feel strongly that some families do a remarkable job homeschooling.
Yes.
But I do worry for those families that are, are maybe have fewer resources. And I would encourage them to reach out. There's tons of online Facebook groups, tons of great homeschooling resources now. I'd encourage them to reach out to me if there's anything that I can do to support. But I worry about any kid who is homeschooled. I worry about them not being as socialized. I worry about them not being exposed to as rich a curriculum. But then again, I again preface that by saying, I know there are some families that are doing an outstanding job of educating their kids.
Correct. I agree with you, Dr. Kron. I feel, I think that just the quality in the information we get in now because of all the online thing, it's like a whole community out there. And I think as long as these families do their due diligence and write by their children and make sure they're either reaching out to us for resources, learning books or whatnot, or getting into that community outside of here.
Right.
You know, I, I agree with you.
This is something we've been battling.
Yeah.
Right. I just was curious because they were late.
I have a friend who's my age. She, she and I went through the doctoral program together. And it was probably the last six months that we were together, we'd spent five years working on our projects together. And I learned that she and her husband homeschooled their children. I was like, whoa. Their children ended up in university at age sixteen, both of them.
Right.
They've, one of them is now a CPA at like age twenty or something. I mean, so there are, there are some people doing extraordinary work. I give them tremendous credit. I just, I encourage them to reach out to me, to the schools for help. If there are resources we can provide you, please let us. We have them. We're here for you. Please reach out for supports if you think you need them. You know, we should be, we should be a good partner for homeschooling families.
Exactly. I think that the, some of the things, the textbooks and things like that that they need, you know, could be costly, that you don't know what their world is. So I just don't want to leave them out there and not think they can come here.
Online, you know, online has helped immensely.
Yeah.
You know, the, you know, the kind of leveled that, that field.
Yeah, curriculum-wise.
And I think we see the difference in the, some of the packets that we're getting in with the online technology. So it is exciting for them, I think. Okay.
At the end of the year, do you get like a confirmation or certificate that they passed?
We get feedback from.
The year.
Their program.
Yeah. We get feedback from the families. We get some work samples. But again, I'm not going to say that we know exactly how all of the kids are doing. I'm not going to say that. It wouldn't be accurate, it wouldn't be honest. Homeschooling is essentially a religious fundamental right in this country.
Correct.
And, and it's something that sort of flies in the face of a lot of, when I think about what I would want a kid to be exposed to as a student, I think homeschooling parents who know how to do it and who do a really terrific job at it, do a terrific job. But those who don't, I, it just concerns me. I'd rather have them here. I'd rather have them with us, being socialized and learning from other kids and, and learning from different teachers even, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
But to each their own is, right.
Absolutely.
And we sort of have to trust what's out there.
And like you said, there has been some highly successful.
Highly successful.
And then there's been some detrimental ones.
Highly successful.
If, if I may on this, I'm just going to step right out in front of it and say, I'm going to abstain because they relate. And one of these is literally looks like a Google search of what a homeschooling plan should look like, with very little information. And the other one is online information with no other information about the program. So I'm abstaining because I couldn't make a decision on that even if I wanted to. So.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
And Mike's abstaining. Okay. All right. Moving on to request for approval of fundraisers.
A bunch of them.
A bunch of them. Oops, I flipped, but I didn't mean to flip. Okay, we ready? Memorial Park School PAC, name the circle for October and November. The PAC also ice cream social for November, bake sale for November, special someone dance in February, gold coin challenge in March, bake sale in March, ice cream social in April. Good job to the PAC for getting all these ahead, all of you. The Rockland High School Travel Club prize calendar for November and December, Travel Club mixed bag online, October through December, hockey, dog dash road race, June, class of two thousand and twenty selling shirts for October and November, and the National Honor of the Assuming Society gift card sales for November. Did you count?
Are these October, November ones at the bottom? Are they for this year or next year coming up?
For this year.
Okay.
Tom, I still have, I still have a problem with people who turn in fundraisers, like that want, they want to start in a week or two weeks. We, we've gotten that information out to people. And if I deny them, then it just hurts the kids.
Right.
So I apologize for some of these that come in on the late side. I always sort of shake my head and go, come on, people. And I'll reach out to them and ask them to please, you know, you do this every year. Can you please get this in on time? But.
I think some things come up though as a PAC mom for five years.
That's right.
I have maybe once or twice called, you know, the week before and tried to get mine on. So I, I feel like, hey, they're the ones trying to put in the time and effort. You know, it behooves us to.
No, I understand that. And then another question, I had, it went November, December, October, and then June, which is really far.
Yeah, right.
And then October, November, saying, oh, we answered the next year already. But you're not, okay.
I think just because the dog dash is also the same day as Rockland Day this year. So they're coordinating it as a long, a tall, wide activity. So I think that's still one of the reasons why.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I think that one's an overachiever.
Well, they got to coordinate it with the police and everything.
Right. Exactly, exactly. So it's, I think that's how it comes up is, as they're getting organized.
Yeah.
And they killed it last year.
Motion to approve?
So we need twelve?
Twelve motions.
Twelve seconds?
Twelve seconds.
All those in favor?
I times twelve.
I times twelve. We're being I-ready.
That was good.
Okay. That was good?
Well done.
That's all. I'm done for the night. All right. Personnel information. Dr. Kron, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
Fine.
Retirement.
Are you good? I'm cutting you off. Onto public service announcements. We will start with ladies first, Ms. Gier.
Okay. We had a very successful open house last week held at the high school. It was a really awesome night. I was a tour guide. So it was really interesting to see like all that the school has to offer. And I really think that the group of eighth graders that we had in here were really interactive and really got to see the best of the high school. Yesterday, we held Project Pumpkin in the high school, which approximately three hundred and fifty kids attended. It was not only a success in numbers, but also just overall success all around. It seemed like the kids were having a great time. The volunteers were interacting with them. So that was just awesome. We are now preparing for Mr. Rockland, which will happen on November fourteenth. We have ten senior guys who have signed up and are preparing their acts. So that's going to be very awesome.
When is that? November eight, again?
November fourteenth.
Remind us.
I know.
And. And.
So it's a fun take, right?
We are also in the midst of planning our Powder Puff game. That is also sometime before Thanksgiving. There are sign-ups in the calf for both players and coaches.
Awesome. Good job. Thank you for all the extra stuff you do, Ms. Gier. We appreciate it. I missed the eighth grade open house because I was doing school committee things instead of parenting. Ms. Davidson?
Yes. I just wanted to say congratulations to student government for Project Pumpkin. I was in student government and I know it's a lot of work to put on that event, so congratulations to them. I'm happy it was successful. Also, this week I went to Pizza Palooza and was a volunteer with the Chamber of Commerce and Reimagine Rockland. And we had 260 people partake, give or take a few. And it was a great success and there was a lot of people out there. So that was my update.
Great.
I was surprised at who won best pizza, but that was me. I just, I had done a quick survey after I had tasted all of it.
You can talk to one of the judges.
They were not on my ballot.
I didn't get to judge. I'm allergic.
And I, yeah. And I was, that's all right, yeah. It was, that was.
Listen, I was getting yelled at because I knew every piece of pizza before it hit my table. I knew who it was from.
Lots of tape.
And they're like, you can't do that. I'm like, I can't help it. I've lived in Rockland for over 30 years.
That's fine.
I know all the pizza places.
Yeah, I, I thought.
So Tom Mills, Mr. Mills wants to be in the judging of Pizza Palooza next year.
I thought, I thought, I've been eating a lot of pizzas, many places in Rockland and, you know, they're all, they're all good. I've, you know, I've not suffered any with them.
I was going to say, that wasn't.
You've never gone home?
Never suffered with it.
Never been a starve.
But I did find one that I really, really enjoyed. I started using it a little bit more.
See, so that was a good adventure for you.
Oh, it was a good adventure. I always enjoy, I, I always enjoy eating. So that was one thing.
I was going to say, now we've interrupted your thought.
Yeah, that's right. One of the things, I was really impressed with this presentation.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
They did a super job.
Good. Good. I want you guys to know what's going on. There are a lot of very smart people working very hard.
Right.
On behalf of our students and teachers. And I want to bring them out and show you what, what they're doing. And I want the townspeople to understand the kind of work and rigor that's going on here in the Rockland Public Schools. There's a lot to be proud of.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the last thing, of course, this end of this week, you know, with the weather changing like it is, we get Halloween coming up, trick-or-treating, so be really careful out there, you know? Especially, you know, with some things going on, you know?
I know, it's always, I think, scarier in the dark and the rain, you know?
So, that's it.
Mr. Phelps?
Dig into the athletic thing a little bit.
Yeah, yes.
Everyone knows about the football team. This Friday night, first playoff game. All the games are at home this year, no excuse not to get out there.
Oh, wow.
Phenomenal team. I, I see this team doing very well and I see the future of this group of boys and girl, boys. Sometimes they have girls, not on Rockland yet, but they've seen them on other teams. But I, I think the future is, is great for, for this group as well. Second league volleyball. Went to a game the other night over at Woodman Hansen. Unbelievable, really. Those girls are phenomenal. I think they lost their first game just the other night to Quincy.